I will now call to order the September twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Here.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Colehoff's absent.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God indivisible and liberate to the end of the world.
Okay, and our next item is approval of the agenda for today's meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes from the last regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the September ninth, two thousand and twenty four, City Commission Meeting.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Yep.
Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is public comments communications. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item that's not on our current agenda, they may do so at this time. We have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into item seven A, our first business item. Public hearing for the purpose of showing cause why the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street in Abilene, Kansas should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished. City Inspector Stearman. Is this thing on?
Okay. Uh, City Inspector Travis Steerman, uh, I have a brief synopsis of the, how, how this all went. Um, I was just, I'm going to present that. So from my start date to two thousand and twenty two, that, uh, structure in question there, or sixteen oh one West First was owned by I seventy properties. And Roger Seymour was the main contact with that. And, uh, I spoke to Roger a few times in that period of, of time about his plans with this, with the, the building and, we had various conversations about grass and tree limbs and stuff like that, but nothing to the extent of, uh, working on the structure. From twenty two to present, uh, Valley Center Holdings is now listed as the owner and Roger Seymour is the main contact for that. Three twenty eight, twenty three, um, March of twenty three, they, we had a, uh, violation wrote for that was, would have been dangerous structure and in-op code violation. Uh, once, when that was wrote, uh, three thirty one, um, I met with Roger or he called to speak with me about the property and, uh, to have both of the trucks that was up there moved. And then to have something done with the property fixed up or something. The red dump truck that was up there was moved out, but, uh, there was like a, an, an older, uh, fire, uh, fire truck and it's like a ladder truck. It, they worked on it, but, uh, it never, it never left that property. Uh, and then no permit was applied for in that year time and, uh, no action was taken on the property that was, that was witnessed that would have been for like the dangerous structure. He, they mowed it. They did that kind of this thing, but I never witnessed anything to like fix the building up. Uh, you fast forwarded to the year later, so February fifth of twenty four, uh, another dangerous structure and an in-op violation was wrote up. My first contact of, of that would been with Roger would have been on March twenty second. Uh, I went with a, to a site, site visit on the property with Roger and we talked about, um, the how to, he would avoid the dangerous structure proceedings like, and, and I told him the way he could do that would be apply for a roof permit and apply for a building permit to fix the, the structure up. Uh, but I also let him know that it, with that permit, if the work was not commenced in thirty days, that the permit would be void. Uh, Roger notified us that, um, later on that month, Roger notified us that he didn't, he did not believe that he needed a roofing license due to a state statute. We let him know that the City of Abilene require, uh, has a requirement in the code article. And, uh, due to the nature of the building being not his residence for like, so be for sale, rent or, um, a commercial building that he would have to be licensed to do the roofing work there. Uh, uh, May sixth, twenty four, Roger attained a city roofer's license and applied for the two permits, one for the building and one to repair the roof. Um, six, five, twenty four, thirty days later, after that, there was no work witnessed or action taken on the property. The decision was made to give it another thirty days since Roger had gotten licensed and, and gotten the permits. Uh, fast forward to July eleventh, um, we decided to process with a dangerous, uh, structure proceedings to continue. And it was set for the study session of seven twenty two, twenty four. Um, and then August twelfth, the resolution was passed by the City Commission. And then early September would have been the third of the fourth. The Valley Center, Valley Center Holdings Attorney contacted city staff and, uh, that was when we forwarded them on to, uh, City Attorney Aaron Martin. Uh, Aaron let us know that they did have a plan for the structure and they were going to present that today at the hearing. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I think we touched on this a little bit in the last meeting, but can you clarify for me, what exactly is it about this building that makes it qualify under the dangerous structures code?
The, 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 what I'm looking at on a dangerous structure is, uh, anything structurally wise of the building. And with this building, uh, as you, in the pictures that were taken and presented to you guys, there's very, there's very many areas of either there's a hole in the roof or the sheeting of the roof is coming, came through the roofing material and is, is warped in such a way to allow water and, and, uh, you know, insects, infestation, birds, uh, anything inside the property to deteriorate it.
And just so. Just so I'm clear, can you state what physical conditions or what code were you relying on to, to qualify this as a dangerous structure?
So that's dangerous, uh, is through the International Property Maintenance Code that the city is. And there's, uh, I believe there's twelve things that consider, uh, what a danger structure is, and I believe this building met like six of those.
Travis, what would be your, um, if work were to commence, what would be your requirement, or what would be your professional thoughts on timeline and what you would want to see fixed within that timeline?
Um, what, what I, I would believe the city needs to be after here is, has to have the property repaired and get a roof on it as soon as possible. Um, I don't know what Roger's, uh, proposal is for, um, fixing the structure. But I would, I would think that three months would be plenty of time to put a roof on it. I don't know, uh, though, if he's going to have to, if he's wanting to do the work himself as he's a licensed roofer, you know, with the city, or if he's needing to gather a crew up. Um, I think it's, uh, I think it's in the city's best interest to save this structure as much as we can here with it. Uh, I, I've, I've done everything that I can do through, um, our protocol on, on trying to get a building repaired. Um, and this is our last steps to it.
Have any other questions for City Inspector Steerman? Thank you. Then Roger, I believe, were you wanting to speak as well? If you could just state your name and address for us.
I signed it already. Uh, my name is Roger A. Seymour. Uh, I'm a member of an LLC, uh, Valley Center Holdings that owns the property. Uh, part of that, we, uh, own the property under I seventy properties. As you're well aware, we had something a few years back called COVID. COVID is pivotal on this and, and why we haven't got stuff done. Uh, during COVID, as landlords, we had a federal and a state mandate that says we could not evict tenants. Now that was not occupied, so that's not exactly that building, but it did affect our other properties. During COVID, we had tenants that said, we can't be evicted. We're not going to pay you. Since COVID restrictions got lifted, we have over one million dollars worth of court ordered judgments against people. We were focusing on trying to keep our other properties occupied, fixed and repaired and did not have the time nor the energy to do this. My wife and I sometimes were spending eighteen hour days back to back to back to back to back. We can count twenty days in a row. We did not work less than twelve hours each. Now, that's not an excuse. That is a background of what's going on. We purchased this building, um, the, uh, the building used to be a nursing home. For those, I don't know how many are from the community. This used to be a nursing home. Uh, the old nursing home, uh, was closed because they would not put a breezeway between the kitchen and the laundry room to meet a state statute or cleanliness of the laundry. That is the reason that place got closed. I talked to the manager who managed the nursing home. Structurally, that building is one of the nicest structures you can have. Uh, our intent was to convert that to not a nursing home, but assisted living or handicap. It's a lot of handicap accessibility in there. We still would like to have that as handicap accessible. We did have, uh, in this calendar year, two other groups that contacted us wanting to know if they could rent it for one, wanted to use part of it for a church. And one, one to use the west end as a daycare. Now there are six doors, uh, to that building. So, um, you would need two egresses for each of those uses and we figured a way that we could potentially make that happen. Dangerous building implies that it, to me, that it's about to fall down. Does it need repair? Absolutely. Does it need a roof? Absolutely. Is it structurally sound? Yes, it is. Now, I probably got to give you my background. I've got an earned degree from Kent State University in engineering in the construction science department. I probably know, I've been called in as an expert witness on many different cases involving structures and, uh, things related to construction in court of law. Those courts have determined that I probably know what I'm talking about. You would have to decide as commissioners, if you believe that I know what I'm talking about. There is some holes in the roof. We acknowledge that. Now recently, we, uh, did purchase some material. It's onsite. You can go look at it if you want. We got a picture of it if you need it. Of, uh, about half the shingles needed to do the entire project and the other half is sitting on a, on a job site location, uh, over at Woodbine, uh, ready to bring over. Uh, challenge we've had this year, be quite honest, it's been one of the wettest years I can remember. Been a tough year. Uh, we've got properties in seven different jurisdictions right now. Uh, during COVID, we actually sold some because we had to make our obligations, uh, for that million dollar shortfall that we had. Um, the building, uh, it's salvageable. It's not bad. It's structurally sound. It's one of the nicer buildings structurally in this town for its age. Now, does it need work on the inside? Yes. Uh, after the nursing home had ceased to exist, they turned off the electricity, turned off the gas. What other utility would you have that you'd think someone would turn off? Be the water. They did not. The sprinkler system froze and it damaged a lot of the ceiling. Not the structure, but the sheet rock. So there's a lot of sheet rock that needs to come out. We've hauled off, um, oh, a couple of truckloads of debris out of the property, but there's still some more debris in there. Now what's our plan? We've got material bought. The weather is now changing where it's moderating away from wet weather. It's not ninety-five and a hundred and five degrees where it's not really conducive to go, uh, roofing. Uh, our, our intent would be to start roofing here, uh, in the next week or two, uh, on that section. The inspector has asked to, to review the, the, the structure. He wants to look at the plywood and felt paper as we go, and we don't have a problem showing him that. The permit that was required, the state of Kansas is very clear. Roofing licenses are required for roofs that are done by someone who is uh, not a general contractor. A, I'm a general contractor and B, they're not required by the property owner, by state statute. However, Abilene has decided to decide to enforce a stronger or more stringent requirement. They require that any roof be done, and that has to do with the last storm or the two storms back where you had a bunch of fly-by-night contractors that came in here. And to be quite honest, they cheated some of your Abilene residents. I'm not going to cheat myself. The requirement that I had to get a roofing license, I complied. What he didn't tell you is that roofing license first when we applied was good for six weeks because the state of Kansas has a limited amount of time that delivered the license. So I had to buy the license twice. The second time was the, the first time we got it. And the second time, it took another thirty days to apply for it. We have that, uh, state roofing license. We got the old roofing license. You want to see the copies of them? I got them here. Uh, we believe that, uh, the, the permit should be reinstated. We don't believe we should have to pay for the permit because we've already paid for it. Uh, we'd like to have time to do this. Realistically, my attorney, who's not here now, he's in a, in another meeting. He'd sent, uh, a notice that, uh, I'm going to read. Cause I don't think it got forwarded from your staff to the, to the commissioners. Did any of the commissioners see our correspondence? I'm going to assume. Correspondence, uh, this goes to Aaron. I'm working, this is from my attorney. I'm working with, uh, Connie and Roger Seymour, who are managed members of Valley Center Holdings. Valley Center Holdings purchased the nursing home, um, located sixteen oh one West, uh, First Street in Abilene. They received notice of a meeting, uh, for today. Uh, before the Abilene Commission to show cause why the structure should not be condemned or an order to be repaired or demolished, to be entered. We look forward to appearing on, uh, the meeting, um, September twenty third. Is my experience that is helpful to share as much information before the meeting as possible expedite an outcome that is, uh, uh, separable, uh, which mean agreeable, uh, to all parties. I've attached exhibits showing that Roger has jumped through all the hoops to become a licensed roofing contractor. Licensing's process has delayed the repair of the roof, which appeared to be the main concern of the, the development administrative assistant. The license shows true commitment to getting the job done and can continue to be a positive investor in Abilene, uh, City of Abilene. In addition to the difficulty of getting the license process completed, Roger and Connie have had difficulty obtaining competent workers. There's a worker shortage in this state, in this nation, um, who can help them physically install the roof. Uh, the bottom line is through repairs will be made to the building. We're asking Valley Center Holdings to be given reasonable time, and we suggested January fifteenth to be complete with the repairs of the roof. The, in its current condition, the property is sound and can be suitably remodeled for a number of residential or commercial purposes. If there are interim steps that the neighbors or city officials would want in place, please let us know uh, of those concerns before the meeting. Keeping the property on the tax roll and avoiding the cost of demolition would be in the best interest of everyone. I look forward to visiting with you about this in your, at your convenience. This was shown up, sent to Aaron, to my knowledge, uh, Joe confirmed. I don't know that, uh, Aaron responded to that. I don't know if he forwarded it to the commission, but in good faith, we're trying to work with, with the commission. Now, where do we go from here? I really think the thing to do is to table this for one meeting. I assume you have a meeting once a month. Uh, table is for one month. Let us work with Aaron, show with good faith that we're working on the roof. And then come back and see what you need to do. To put this on a condemnation and then take it back off the condemnation seems a little bit silly to me. Uh, so that would be kind of my preference is that you table it. You know that we're serious, that we're going to fix it. We've got material purchased. We have some help secured to help us do it. Uh, I'm going to be doing the work with myself and, and the help that I, uh, secured. Uh, now he said that, you know, lawn care, um, we've done, in a very wet year, we've got properties in lots of different communities. We kept lawns up or down. We kept lawns to the requirements, uh, necessary. We've done, uh, storm repairs. We've done other things on occupied, uh, buildings in numerous communities. This one got to the back burner because we had other things that were uh, a bit more pressing. We had somebody living in a place that maybe had a broken window from a storm or may had, uh, lightning that, that hit something and, and a breaker went out. Uh, so we've addressed all of those. Uh, if you look at our track record through the years, we bring, we buy properties that are distressed and we bring them back into condition for the communities that we serve. So, um, that's really the, the comments I've got. I, I don't know. Joe, do you need, have anything you need to add?
No, I think the letter was the basis for what.
Okay, and you've heard the letter. So I, I would ask that you, you table it for one month. Let me go back with Aaron, show good faith that we're actually doing the work. In a month's time, come back. If we haven't done, slam me. If we have done something, you know, we'll have time to go with him and, and look at the structure, look at the building. Um, he may see something that, uh, uh, he didn't see, he's not been in the structure. I don't believe, no, never has been in the structure. He's been on the outside. Um, you know, we realize that the building is an older building. We realize it can be an asset to your community. Uh, to force a condemnation is silly and that's, that's not what the resolution says, condemn or repair. So I'd like to see it tabled. If you can't table it, uh, eliminate the demolition part and put in there as an order to repair it. You can always come back sixty days from now or ninety days and condemn it if I haven't done anything. But using the condemnation letter and language is a little bit strong. Any questions?
How long do you think you would need to get the roof repaired?
We asked to, through the, uh, uh, January fifteenth, because I, I go take shingles off. I may find some structural or something that I'm not aware of. The actual roofing part, we're talking thirty, forty-five days uh, to have that done. It's assuming that we don't have some structural. Now, we do know on the front porch, uh, that would be the wrong thing. Front stairway going downstairs to the old laundry room, that structure needs to be restructured. Um, I think we, I think there's some pictures, uh, to that effect somewhere. Um, the backside is where we would start because that's where the, the greatest damage or the greatest deterioration has been where the wind and the sun and the elements have hit the backside more than it has the front side. And then if the fascia needs to be redone, that'd be the time to redo in the fascia. Uh, when we do the fascia, if we don't do it in a vinyl product, we need to be painting it. Uh, so realistically, to answer your question, uh, about six weeks. And that, that's the roof portion, uh, the, the enclosure of the building, uh, the painting, um, associated with the roofing, not necessarily the painting of the building in its entirety, and certainly nothing on the inside, um, other than potentially a little bit of cleanup before there.
We have meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. I guess I'm kind of looking at my fellow commissioners here, but I'm wondering if we table that to the second meeting in November.
Well, we're still in the public hearing section, so we'll have to wait until the actual.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm just.
Yeah.
Taking us, I guess, a straw poll. I mean, if, I think we all want to see the, the property put back into service and, and taken care of. Um, I guess I'll just share with you. I think that's kind of where I'm at. I don't think I'm willing to push it to January. Um, I think, you know, that's, I think that's about eight weeks to then in November.
Yeah, that's, that was my thought too, was pushing it basically roughly sixty days to our second meeting in November to.
So.
Roof being repaired and, and making sure that you're keeping in contact with City Inspector Steerman and City Attorney Martin on that.
Who's the attorney?
Mr. Martin is our city attorney. Mr. Steerman in the back is probably who you'll be in contact with.
That's, I need to know who the contact person would be.
Um, just so we can ensure that it is actually happening. I, I don't want to demolish or take over a property either if we don't have to, but we, at the same time, we need to see some progress being made.
Uh, to demolish that old building, uh, there may or may not be viable asbestos in there. Uh, to deal with viable asbestos could be very costly. Whereas if I deal with it by encapsulation, which is a permitted, uh, procedure, much less costly. And I'm not saying there's any in there. I, I've never had. And I'm not saying there's any in there, I, I've never had it tested, I don't know. Uh, but the cost of, of demolition would far exceed the cost of roofing.
I think, I think we're just looking for a commitment from you to
Yeah.
to follow through, it seems like we've had a couple of things start, and we just need to get something finished, or we're kind of left without a lot of options.
Okay.
I will say, kind of along those lines, though, there are quite a few incentives available. Um, I would sure encourage you to uh investigate that with city staff. Um, that we can.
Could we elaborate either now or, or at a different meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'll just point you to city staff, there's, um, there's a number of incentives, RHID, IRBs, TIF, CIDs, there's a lot of different acronyms. But reach out to city staff and see what might be available for that property.
Would there be a person to talk to or just in general city manager or?
I think that's a, yeah, you can always start there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we get any other questions during the public hearing?
No.
Thank you for coming here and uh, uh, explaining it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, our next item is seven B, consider approval of resolution.
Oh, oh, hold on, is there anybody else?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else to speak on this issue?
Then I wanted to look over, so get some guidance from City Attorney Martin, um. Looking at this, so we're, we're in the public hearing. Um, sounds like direction here is to table this discussion to the second meeting in November. To allow time for the property owner to take care of necessary permits, make progress on the property and all that. But the right thing to do would be to keep this hearing part open and then revisit that hearing then. Or, or should we just close a hearing and then go to this next item and, and then potentially table the next item to the next, to that?
I understand your question, and I think, uh, depending on where you want to go, you may wish to leave it open, so just so everyone's on the same page, the point of the public hearing is to hear evidence and statements from the building official, from the property owner and from any other interested parties. So that you can make a singular determination whether the property is dangerous and unsafe. If it is dangerous and unsafe, based on evidence presented during the public hearing, you proceed to the next step. Adopting the resolution, declaring it as such, and setting reasonable timeframes for commencing the work and diligently prosecuting it. If you wish to hear additional evidence or follow-up from the building official or the property owner or other parties, or allow for that opportunity, I would encourage you to keep the public hearing open and continue this to a date certain. And one of my primary thoughts there is the public hearing was preceded by notification, fairly formal notification in the newspaper and certified mailings. And I think we can avoid restarting that process uh if we leave the hearing open. Of course, doing that prohibits you from acting on any sort of resolution today, but uh, to the extent that that's okay with you, then I think it's a matter of leaving the hearing open and continuing to a date and time certain.
Yeah, so that's what I'm, I, I'd like to do is, uh, so I can go ahead and make a motion then to leave this public hearing open.
I did just want to clarify a couple of things, are you uh familiar with the ins and outs of the IPMC that Mr. Stearman referred to?
Ins and outs is a.
Let me be more specific, are you, are you? I, I've just kind of glanced over it, but it's not clear to me that calling something either unsafe or dangerous is grounds for demolition in the IPMC.
Sure, there's a couple of points I would make, first, I didn't have an opportunity to respond, there was communication directed to me by Mr. Knop. I promptly passed that along to representatives of the city. Beyond that, I won't speak publicly to the substance of our communications, but I can assure you that I did convey it. Uh, and the nature of that was simply to let us know they were going to be at the meeting and uh wasn't intending to ignore you, Mr. Knop. But I did, I did pass that along. Uh, secondly, the state statute has the procedure, uh, it, it sets forth the procedure that we're following, and it allows the city to condemn dangerous and unsafe structures. The statute does not define dangerous and unsafe, so cities that have not adopted the IPMC use the common and ordinary meaning of dangerous and unsafe when they're applying that. In this case, the city of Abilene has adopted the IPMC, which includes uh, multiple sections and specifically, I have it pulled up. Uh, section one point oh eight, one point five, and as Mr. Stearman indicated, there are um, several criteria, any one of which will result in a structure being deemed dangerous and unsafe. And uh, I won't recite them for you if you want me to, but they're very detailed and nuanced, and they cover everything from uh ingress and egress to compliance with uh electrical codes to um, heating, air conditioning, ventilation, drainage, a little bit of everything. So I think I'd have to learn more to see how we apply those, and I have not attempted, uh, Mr. Seymour referenced my involvement, and I appreciate that, but it is not. I haven't been involved in applying the code to this particular property, I can simply direct you to the code that would be applied.
Okay, and I guess just to be clear, I think the code very specifically says that property should be condemned. And my understanding of the definition of that in this context is not open to the public, it doesn't specifically prescribe demolition in those instances, so I just want to make sure that if we are pretending to use the IPMC that we should follow it.
So we're, we're following the statute as supplemented by the IPMC in our case, and the statute speaks to the if you make a determination that it's dangerous and unsafe, the city commission condemning it. And then from there, the property owner has the option, and we do not tell him or her how to do it. But they can either demolish it or repair it and make it safe and secure. Uh, basically eliminating the dangerous and unsafe conditions that led you to condemn it in the first place. So condemn can mean a couple of different things, but in this context, it's the order that it is dangerous and unsafe. And then under that umbrella, the property owner gets to decide whether to repair it or demolish it, and if they don't do that, then the city gets to choose.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to keep the public hearing open? I mean, if
I think it's open until we close.
If it's not closed.
I, um.
I'm just being a pain.
I don't have really strong thoughts on that, I do think it is important that uh, we make clear on the record the date and time at which the hearing will be resumed. Uh, I don't think that there's anything wrong with making a motion, just to put that on the record, um.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, though, go ahead and make a motion to make our, our intent to property owner clear. So, so you're, you're well informed of what, what we're thinking uh as a governing body, so.
For clarification, you're talking about tabling it?
Yes, yeah, tabling it, reopening the public hearing at that second meeting in November, which is November twenty-fifth. I believe.
Did you say date and time?
Yes, and four o'clock would, would be acceptable.
That'd be November eighteenth at four o'clock, oh, right. No, sorry, November twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I was looking at the wrong one.
All right, does that, that make sense?
Twenty-fifth is Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Monday.
Monday before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
Is it possible to go to the first meeting in December to avoid that week? I, I think I, I know I've got a commitment, I don't, I don't anticipate I'm going to be needed, but uh, if we go to the first meeting in December, avoid that Thanksgiving, we got a first.
Yeah, that would be December ninth. Yeah, Monday, December ninth.
Yep.
I'm good with that. Yep, so I'll make them, yeah. I'll make a motion to keep this um public hearing open and regarding uh the dangerous structure uh discussion, and then reopening that hearing at our December ninth meeting, which will begin at four PM.
And I'll second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussion?
Um, yeah, other than to clarify, yeah, and, and the time between now and then, seeing that the property is getting worked on with city staff uh, to see progress, because, you know, I would say we're all in agreement that we want the property to uh, be, be usable and, and, and uh be in use, so.
Just.
My side, personal contact I should be making would be with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, I guess, to add to that, my expectation is that in the second meeting of December, that this is no longer an unsafe, unsafe structure. By definition, not just to see progress. I don't know if that's reasonable, Travis, I'm thinking the roof is kind of the biggest thing that you're aware of anyway.
Yep.
Um, so I guess that's just for your knowledge, I, I don't want to just see progress, I want to see everything buttoned up.
Have any further commission discussion? Okay, seeing now, midroll call vote, Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. My assumption is we will not have to take any action on seven B.
Yeah, so it, since we can't.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Making, making it a part of it. All right, we have no items for discussion, um, next item is nine A, city managers' reports, no city managers' report. Um, next item is motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussions? Seeing now, midroll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries, we're adjourned.